Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's town council meeting of Avro Town Council on Monday, 20th of August 2024. A little bit of housekeeping. Firstly, it's lovely to see so many members of the public present this evening. In the case of the fire alarm, which a drill is not planned, we have five doors behind me, or you can exit through the front building the way in which you came. Next on the agenda, we have item two, which is apologies for absence. And this evening, we have apologies from councillor Fyodorale, councillor Antel Westby, councillor John Taylor, and councillor Nigel Fates. Next, we have declarations of interest. Receive and consider any declarations of interest in the rightness below. Do any members have declarations? Councillor Fraser.
No interest in tonight.
Thank you very much. And. Yes, I do. And any peculiar interests? None. Next, we have item four, public participation. Would any members of the public like to participate? Yes.
Public participation, my understanding is that it's an opportunity for the public to hold the town council to account. So in that vein, perhaps a member of the town council, other than yourself and your mother, who was, I'm sorry, councillor Samto, would like to recite the knowledge of people that don't understand the several principles of public life. The knowing principles, which is what you all work to. Would you like to inform us what those are?
Um, except to all. Well, I can, I can go through and get a list of them if you want.
Well, I would hope that you would know these.
Well, I don't know them. I can't, I'm not that brilliant at remembering.
Sense accountability, leadership, integrity.
If you want to give me a moment.
Objective control.
There's a lot of problems that we don't want to involve by class.
No, we don't.
The seventh one is leadership, which says holders of public offices should exhibit these principles in their own behaviour and treat others with respect. They should actively promote and robustly support the principles and challenge poor behavior wherever it occurs. That will all be explained.
Ex-councillor Lane, the principles you're talking about, I don't know if you're aware, they only apply to councillors when they're conducting the business of council or acting in their capacity as a councillor. And I actually, if you, any allegations that any of our members have conducted themselves in such a way in recent months?
Okay.
Would anyone else? Yes.
Um, may I, Michael? I've been on the Atroffs and the Park, and we've been here now for seven years. I'm not the best person for the job, but some of it's good. What I have in view of your phone make-up for instance, it costs our time, our holiday, if I own one. We do stand to say that this string call is my afternoon night after a long and hard day of work. The reward is seeing kids basically. We'd be fine in a bar and by one. We've had decent sort of parade of giving out the innovative parachutes lately. With all this between work and giving family up, I'm so proud of our very small team. This year was not our best, but we've taken it down with the goat. Some comments from our town there were for my attention reason. Any comment that they would have would be called lazy and greedy. Leave our two words, do not encourage a single member of the committee or any of our volunteers. I have no idea, you have no idea how much effort and personal sacrifice you're giving to the events. And the town may, you should be supporting us and beating us up. I'm here today with apology for myself and just everyone involved.
Thank you for taking the time to come and address us this evening and myself. And my comments that I made, they weren't made in my capacity is met. And so I won't be offering an apology in my capacity for this evening. And I'm very aware of the hard work that goes into the carnival committee because actually, my family were members and my granddad chaired the committee for many, many years, built the first stamp of sleigh and was the original path Christmas. So I do know and I do appreciate it. But I didn't make those comments in this capacity. Anyone else? Councillor Tyra, you're welcome to object if you'd like.
Um, yes, if I may, addressing what you've said, and I've said this for many years. As a town council, our role is, yes, carry on to our such street duties, which is cemetery, drop bins, vacant states, is. That's it. But the town council primarily is to support communities, community groups. What can we do? What, how can we help? Whether it's just sport, whether it's financial support, risk, use of money, and thus, what I think is the town council collectively, is we want what we want to see, because we want to promote the community. You know, find the best facilities. And I don't know if this has been spoken of, I don't really know, it's a bit slow. But I just want to make that point to everyone. The role of our council is to support the community, to work in its own right, to work, these stakeholders as well. To support those who grow the town. For everyone, regardless of where the honour would be in the world. So firstly, I definitely give you that.
And I think it goes without saying, obviously, the town council do support the Atrof semi carnival committee, obviously by allowing the use of our land for your event. And I think if you had of submitted a grant application this year or any year, that again is something that the town council probably, I can't say to definite, because I'm only one of fifteen, but would consider and likely support, so. We offer, for, for groups like yourself, we offer grants, large grants of up to £5,000. We have an item on the agenda this evening, considering an application from the Fun Fest team for £4,000. And I think in recent meetings, we've gave £5,000 to Atrof Christmas Lights.
And the Bowls.
And the Bowls Club. So, yes, you'd be very welcome to submit an application.
People also very well perhaps understand the three to ten role, that's a discussion, what discussion is involved as well. Okay, what can we do? Because these events are vital to the town and the boroughs.
Can I just confirm that you're refusing to apologise for calling the committee greedy and lazy? And your reason for not apologising is you said, did that and you weren't in your capacities and there, even though.
I am not, I, I am not going to entertain this with you, ex-councillor Lane. I've made myself very clear. If you'd like to come and speak to me outside of the meeting in the capacity in which I made the comments, I would be very glad to speak to you. But I'm not going to bring it into this chamber. Anyone else? Tony?
Thank you. Yes, I'm, I'm here to ask for your support. I'm on to number eleven on your agenda, I believe. As the Atrof Alvos, I represent the Fun Fest team. We're made up of ten volunteers from local people, the business community. And we seek to support some events throughout the year. And some help, others be self-support. So I'm here to ask for your permission to use the rec for the fireworks event this year. And also the grant funding application, I think we applied for £4,000. And that would go quite a long way towards the cost of the actual fireworks and the pyrotechnics that we intend to put off. Last year, we had an excellent turnout. And it was way above what we were expecting on previous year's records. It seemed like the rest of the county failed to put a firework display and we were about the only ones that managed to go ahead and crack on with it. So we had people from all over north come to visit us for that event. So with that in mind, I'd ask for your support, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. Will you be staying and present for the item itself, or?
I can do it. If you take anything to us, we've got some other committee members here as well, so we'll do our best for you.
Any other ones in the public that can move on?
Yeah, I've got another one. Just quickly, I noticed you have provided a laptop to the subcontractor who is doing caretaker work. Is it the precedent we're alleging as a town council to provide subcontractors who are working on town council land and buildings with a laptop purchased by a public model?
That is incorrect. The laptop that was purchased is for a shared laptop to be used by both of our caretakers. Our caretaker that's subcontracted and our caretaker that is employed, and it remains on premises, on site at all times.
Perhaps you could put that in writing, so because that doesn't come across in the minutes.
Yeah.
And it comes across as it was purchased by the subcontractor. So perhaps you could do that. And the other thing is, would you like to comment on the rumours that you're finding to kick the football club out of their building?
Sharon, has that got legal purchase at the moment? Is it a lease?
Well, no.
No?
Well, all I can say is that we've had a meeting with the football club and they are due to present the discussions at a meeting on Friday. So I haven't really got anything else to say because nothing has been set in stone.
And actually, the meeting that we had with members of the, it was the chairman and the secretary of the football club, what day did we meet? Wednesday this week?
Yeah.
It was really, it was actually a really pleasant atmosphere, wasn't it, Sharon? And they were very amicable. And I think that there was definitely a sentiment that all of us, all parties present, wanted to work together to achieve what's best for the club and the community.
Yeah, that's good to hear, because there was a rumour that you were looking to get them out of there, so you could turn it into the town hall and sell this building. So that's really good to hear.
That's certainly not true.
Yeah, that's really, really good to hear that.
Yeah, I think we need to be careful about coming to these meetings in a public forum and saying anything and saying it's a rumour. Because there's absolutely no truth in what you've said at all.
Well, I'm, I'm speaking as members of the public and I'm asking the town council, and you've clarified it, so that's perfect. You've nipped a rumor in the bud. So that's, that's what you're there for, to stop that and to stop this information going round. And you understand precisely what public participation is about.
Well, sorry, I, I think public participation is about holding the town. You're absolutely right. But if there are rumours that have absolutely no foundation for, there is, there is, you said that vote is a rumour.
Yeah.
It's probably best to do that privately towards the clerk in the first instance. And if you're not satisfied with that, because this is a public forum and you're, you're saying that a confidential meeting somehow has found its way.
You know, and you've addressed it. So that's, you've done exactly what you needed to do, you know, so.
If we draw this to a close, I think, before we move on, would any last members of the public like to speak? So, okay, that's a loss. Next, we have item five, which is the minutes of the town council meeting held on the first of July, twenty twenty four, acceptance and approval. Councillor De Sisa, is that a proposal? Yeah. And a second there from councillor Dalton, a show of hands for their approval, please.
Yeah. Majority.
That's a majority vote, thank you. Next, we have item six, which is a thought went to other outside bodies, the Academy Community Council invitation from the head teacher to appoint. We've already had some context via email on this. Would anyone like to kickstart the debate? Or does anyone have anything that they would like to comment? Councillor Ashley.
I think, I just think we need to be a bit careful. If we start appointing representatives, if someone wants to be a representative, that's absolutely fine, but we just need to be careful not to set precedent. About starting to sit on loads of outside groups. Because if we do sit on this speaker, I'm reading the terms of reference, we could be asked to sit on a number of others. That would be mind-wracking.
Councillor Tyler.
My way. And. I would just say, it's probably strange taking of the context of how I'm involved in it. And as just for record, again, I'm making it very clear to the people, I probably never said the town council, I've not been approved. I'm invited as ex-chair of governors and also on set. Basically, that's my role. And I also encourage all, all the youth groups, the listeners, and probably focusing on what we want to do, how can you go there? Can you get any kind of involvement, curious, and just to have a seat? There's valid conversation, which, you know, I totally agree with. And again, it's on my recommendation to get, make it, gain it on the, on the. And what I would suggest, and I've already scheduled them. I think Neil Rashford must have seen emails taken from the comments. If the town park has got time to, at least it might be every two, three times. But I think from the town park, there's at least you've got the base of influence. And there's nothing radical going on, it's more just a understanding with different people that are not involved in different groups. That's all to give the boys. And so there's nothing to say about it anywhere, but I would advocate the town park to be.
Thank you. I mean, my personal viewpoint is that as far as the academy goes, of course, for the leisure centre, we've got the governance board and there's town council representation on that. And then we also have the Atrof maybe plan steering group, and obviously there's representation and overlap with some of the members. It's almost like a bit of duplication. And obviously, the head teacher does sit on that board. And I wonder if actually what might be more constructive and perhaps, you know, not put any strain on Sharon's time or resource would be if at those meetings, at the steering group meetings, if whatever the academy council is driving, whatever their agenda is, they feed back at that point and seek support in that forum. Is that something that you'd be happy with?
Agreed. I just know you feel that the town council is the biggest, personally excluded. I think during this session, the committee suggested bringing it a little bit through the area, being a little bit in through the area. You know, you're an outside boss, and it's a lot of new to groups, so how do you think that, that can be changed? I'm very happy with that, I totally agree.
Okay. Can I formulate that as a proposal then, please, Sharon? Councillor Taylor, do you have something that you wanted to add?
No, I'll second, well, I do have something to add, but I'll second that, just to tell you that you actually danced to what I said in the community council.
Oh, my apologies.
We'll go back to minutes then.
Yes, of course. No, we've done minutes, there's, I'm sorry.
As committee co-options.
Oh, yeah.
You moved to appointments last month, yes.
Okay. I think the agenda was reissued, the agenda was reissued with amendment, you've got the open one, it wasn't recalled, sorry. And so, yes, so can I, can I move that proposal then, please? That we make contact with the academy and invite them, obviously, to funnel in from their academy committee council meetings to the Atrof maybe plan steering. And can I have a second after that proposal, please? Oh, sorry, councillor Taylor already said she would, but thank you, Ed. It's nice to know that you support the proposal. And can I please have a show of hands? That's unanimous. Thanks very much. Next, we have item seven, which is the GPNF terms of reference to ratifying amendment as the clerk has presented. This is for consideration and resolution. This is in the meeting papers. Hopefully, everyone's had an opportunity to read and invite the meeting. Can I please have a proposed? Yes, thank you. It is just for members of the public that might not have seen the meeting papers, it's just to amend the committee membership numbers from a cap of six to a minimum of six, so. And can I have a second of that proposal? Councillor Fraser, a show of hands, please. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. And to appoint extra GPNF committee members. Are there any members of the council that are not currently on the general purpose and finance committee that would like to be? Councillor Dalton and councillor Bercham. And. I'm happy to make that proposal. Is there a second to that proposal? Councillor Winfield, and can I have a show of hands, please?
You, majority, two extensions.
You can thank for yourself. And next, we have item nine, which is committee for options for our newest councillor, councillor Si Long-Winfield, onto the planning and highways and standing orders committees. Is it just the, is it just the two that you'd like to join? Yeah, okay, no, that's fine, just checking. And can I have a proposal, please? Councillor Ashby and a second there, councillor Bercham and a show of hands, please. That is unanimous. Thank you. Next, we have financial matters to authorise payments for acceptance and approval. Councillor Fraser, if you'd like to just step out for a moment, please. Any comments from members? If not, can I please have a proposal and second there for their acceptance? Councillor Tyra, seconded by councillor Reynolds and a show of hands, please.
Yeah, unanimous.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you. And next, we have item ten B to agree the direct debit, again, for acceptance and approval. Any comments? If not, can I have a proposal and second there, please? Councillor S Taylor, seconded by councillor Bercham and a show of hands. That is unanimous, I think. Next, we have item C to receive income for acceptance and approval. Can I have a proposal and second there, please? Councillor Dalton, seconded by councillor Wenham and a show of hands. Thank you, that's unanimous. And then we have item E, which is, G rather, which is to pay cash for information. Any comments? No. We have income and expenditure for information. Any comments? No. And we also have the quarterly bank reconciliations to note for information. Any comments? No. Thank you for including those, Sharon, because I know we don't ordinarily have those, but I think it is good practice. And so thank you. Item eleven is the approval of the Fun Fest fireworks 2024 event to consider grant application for £4,000. Do any members have any comments? Councillor Ashby.
And I think so long as the criteria is met, I'm happy to propose and support.
Yes. Sharon, as far as criteria goes, we didn't have any accounts, did we? But we did request bank statements.
I did. I only got three months with the bank statements, but there were no accounts presented. So I did point that out, didn't I, Tony? And sort of recommended that our policy does state that there should be accounts, and it was a larger amount, so they really ought to be certified by an accountant. But last year, the precedent was that there was one hopeful years of bank statements, but I, I did mention that to you, but I didn't actually get them through. So I don't know.
I, I was going to make a suggestion. The suggestion that I was going to make is, well, there's, there's two, actually. The first is that, and it's not very fair, because obviously, we've got members of the committee that have made an effort to come and sit with us tonight, is that we defer the application while waiting for the information that's been requested, we provided. And the second, and this is my preference, would be that actually we review the grant award policy. And because I think that to expect someone to submit a certified accounts, if they are a very small group that is running, you know, with low, low figures, low income, to have the expectation for them to have their accounts paid to be certified, may be considered by some unreasonable. And I do think perhaps there's better ways that we could do it. And I do wonder if actually if it was acceptable last year, if, you know, twelve months worth of bank statements would be acceptable this year, but of course, would conflict with our policy. And I also don't want to set a precedent that recently, Atrof Town Football Club made a grant application, which we deferred pending certified accounts that I don't think we've received yet. But that would resolve that issue if they could just submit a year's worth of accounts or a year's worth of bank statements. I don't know how others feel. I'll go to councillor Taylor first, and then I'll come back to councillor Ashley. What are your thoughts?
I actually do think for some reason, for too long, the certified accounts, because there are groups and organisations that probably don't have an accountant, that probably just have a treasure lab or a bookkeeper that took their stuff for them. So I think that then that would be the policy needs to be addressed. I think that is quite harsh. And I don't know if we've actually taken mass amendments that previous councillors put in, that when any organisation talks badly about the council, they have to return their money, because I know there has been an issue recently where a group has spoken badly in a meeting, and then it has been reported back to full council or to councillors from an attendee of that meeting. And I would have to be stifling in freedom of speech. So I do think that if that draws the, putting in there was a member's present, that it should also be taken out.
Councillor Ashby, what are your thoughts?
I echo the comments about policy change. I think, I think it's good. We want to make it, we want to have the checks and balances in there, but we don't want the balance to be too high. Of whatever we've got to do to allow them to speak, so I can ask them questions.
Of course. So can I please have a proposal and second to suspend the standing order as well now?
Just.
Yes, of course.
I think it's a combination of things. What I'm personally, it might seem like, is an agreement in principle that we approve it, we've done it in the past. And I think I would some comments on this policy too harsh, depending on size of the group or the Jewish group or what you. Needs to be, but I think it's fair, do you know, they need some kind of, let's say, because it probably takes a lot to work on this. The waste of another moment, oh, are we going to get them or not? Unless there's significant reasons why we can't approve it. And if that's actually the council, we can just get back to things, or where, or what key. That's policy decision, as Councillor Ashby said, and councillor Taylor. I think giving some kind of comfort tonight is far better than saying, let's do it, let's review the policy again. Then that's another reason why the policy, you know, I think it's a middle ground or something. And we've done it in the past, they've been agreed, and the lighting committee, we approved it. Again, it comes back to the principle, the town council is not here to say, you cannot, you can't do it. Yes, we need checks and balance. I totally agree. But we're also here to support community groups, whatever they are, how big they are, what role they are, and give them some comfort. So I'd like to make a proposal.
Can I?
Sorry, if you want to.
All right, yeah, I'd just like to move a moment to suspend the standing orders to allow them to speak. So can I have a proposal and a second for that? I've got councillor Taylor and councillor Wenham. A show of hands, please. That's unanimous. Would you like to ask the question?
It was to find out what's doable from you guys.
It's, it is doable. The comment that I'd like to make, if it's going to wrestle any fears that you may have. Our team meeting, as of only last week, and that was in between me being in contact with the clerk and coming along tonight, was that we agreed as a committee to have a professional do our accounts. Because of the the situation that we've rose to, it's very much that the group now is, is getting a little bit bigger and we're putting on some bigger events. And that elevation means that we need, we are conscious that we need to be more transparent in what we do and not necessarily try and stifle what we do, because we're, we're putting on some good stuff. But it makes it a little bit more above the board, rather than just a load of people putting some stuff together and raising a load of money for charity. So we're not going to get up to charity status. What we wanted to do was to just have a professional accountant look at our finances and sign them off come the end of the year. We're not going to need tax to pay or anything like that, but it would make things like coming along to ask you for money and any other grant funding applications that we may well want to enter, a lot more viable. Because we've got that authenticity, to be honest. So, you know, with that in mind, we, we did agree to have a professional look at our accounts and just, you know, get things formalised. But whether we can get them done in time, I don't really know. We've, we've not even set any criteria or we've found out any criteria what needs to be met and things. Or we've found out any criteria what needs to be met and things like that.
Yeah. Um if I can just make a quick comment and then I'm gonna come to councillor Taylor and then councillor.
We just had a comment, have you still suspended standing orders?
Just looking at the policy, excuse me, you've read the policy from months ago, mate. Um but in the large grant section, it says all awards must be properly accounted for. And evidence of extended conditions that clients requested is made in the form of bank statements or accounted benefits by an intended profession. It's not quite as black and white as you think it is. And and I don't know that, because you wrote the policy for months ago.
Um. I'll come to Dom first, then councillor Taylor, then I'll make my question later.
I'm just gonna certainly, um what this person says, um which she's supporting the grant fully. Um because it provides such great entertainment for our town and community. As you already said, um Norwich, I think it was, um did have their fireworks displayed over there because.
You must have seen it before the evening, yeah?
Um so to provide that for our town, um with the size that we are, is a great achievement. Secondly, and very quickly, um I believe there were some grants previously, uh for previous years, so we would have accounts. Or bank statements from previous years, and that's two. Um so maybe just get one years for other accounts or bank statements.
Yeah. It would be the next year.
Yeah.
Um councillor Taylor.
My question is specifically as standing orders were suspended to allow the grant application to be discussed. And the applicant to speak um would be actually just asked, would a month put any extra pressure on you? If it was related in reading a couple of weeks to the open space meeting, it could go on. There was excuses in the open space, would it? I think, yeah, I think you should. Um so councillor, would it with an extra month put that much pressure on you that it would empower the event going ahead?
Uh I don't really know, Sam. Sorry, councillor Taylor, I don't really know.
You can call me Sam, I've got my words in braces.
Um not really, I'm not really aware of what's expected of us. If we approached an accounting professional to get a sign off. Um I'm not really, uh I'm not really sure what's expected of us as a group. Nor how long it would take them to get the uh, get the, the, you know, package finalised.
I I I I asked the question solely because. Um as much as I agree with councillor Tyra and councillor De Souza. And the event is probably the biggest event that the community holds. And. I am very mindful that we have said no to another group. For exactly the same reason. And that would be unfair and unjust on that group, that if we then allowed you to do the same. And I, I, I wouldn't want that, I wouldn't want. Um the council to come under that scrutiny, because obviously there is quite a lot of scrutiny. Which there should rightly so be. But I am, I am mindful that we said no to another group pending further information. In, in principle, I, I think. We have supported in the past, I, I don't think that there is any fear that with the correct criteria being met. It wouldn't be supported again. I would just like to see the correct criteria met.
If I, if I may, um what I'm gonna say is two seconds, uh. Yeah. What I was gonna say was, um firstly, comment. Thank you so much for coming and making the application and also for what you do for the community. I'm very much looking forward to coming and opening Woodfest on the first of September, and I hope it's as brilliant as it was last year. Um and no doubt it will be. The question is, because I, I would be quite happy this evening. To actually make a proposal that we do award the grant. Subject to um receipt of twelve months' bank statements. Um before the money is transferred. Um and obviously the council being content with those bank statements. I would be very happy to make that proposal this evening. What I'd like to know is obviously, and I think you do as a group, pride yourself on your affordability um to the whole community. Is the intention to keep your ticket prices affordable for families?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think it's taken a price. I think it's gone.
Three pounds, fifty pence.
Sorry, it's gone fifty pence.
Three pounds, right.
And obviously the, the, the grant application helps dramatically with.
Subsidising that, thank you.
I'd like to, if I might just announce that Woodfest is trending.
Yes, it is, and that is brilliant. I will say that the reason that I'm prepared to make the proposal that I've made. Is because I think that as a result of the, this is time sensitive. Um unlike the application that the football club made uh recently. But I would say that actually after this evening's meeting, we could write to the football club and say, actually. Um. You could supply us with twelve months of bank statements. Um instead of your accounts, as you have no certified accounts.
Okay.
Um and then the precedent is taken off, take, taken off the table. Um councillor Taylor.
I'm really sorry, I'm gonna amend your proposal. Just slightly, just slightly, because I feel the accounts actually are the accountability, not the bank statements. Because the accounts show where that money is spent and where it's come from. So I actually really do feel the accounts are, but I'm happy for. Your proposal to prepare up for the accounts to be submitted before the money, which could be as late as October, because you don't actually do the event. Until, till then, so.
No, I, I, I think that. To ask that um in the timeframe would maybe be too much, and also, as has been pointed out, the policy at present allows for one or the other. So twelve months' bank statements would be policy compliant. So.
Going forward, you know, I'm not gonna be able to speak for any other group, but certainly now. We've, uh you know, we have seen success over the last couple of three years, so going forward. We, we fully intend to look at having the accounts packaged down come the end of our, our year, whatever it is. Um and then make any grant application going forward in the future. A lot more.
Thank you. It's certainly good. Thank you very much. Um do I have a second to the proposal, please? Councillor Ashby, a share of hands, please. That is. Majority vote.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah.
And Sharon, if you can, uh make contact with the football club and.
Yeah, I will.
Offer them an alternative uh to their application. And we can reconsider that at the next meeting. Thank you very much. Do not feel obliged to stay for the rest of the meeting. If you'd like to leave, you would be very welcome to. Okay, and thank you. Uh next we have item twelve, uh which is the men's shed for consideration and resolution. Uh councillor Ashley, would, would you like to?
Yeah.
Come up with your request of the item?
Um so I was contacted um with regards to the shed in Wyndham. Uh with a question of whether we could have something similar in Attleborough. And I sent around to everybody the link to um the shed in Wyndham, so do you have a good idea what I was talking about? Did you?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Um personally, I think it would be a great thing to have for a number of reasons, because it would be. Um the, the, the view is it's a men's shed just for men, but it's not. It's a shed for, for everybody in the whole community. To do various different things, depending on the need. And I thought it was something that would be, would be good to champion. Um not to. Promise anything, because you need volunteers to run it. But if we could try and facilitate as best we possibly could. To have a, a similar facility in the town, I think it would be worthwhile, of course.
Councillor Ashby. I know many years ago, it was really good and put forward. And there were some restrictions and criteria that we couldn't meet. But I do think it's amazing, and if we can meet the criteria now, I think we should be supporting it. And as for facilitating it, hopefully with the joint project that the district council and the town council are now embarking on. We might actually have a facility where we could actually facilitate that. Either inside of the building or outside, because I believe there is an outside area that maybe we can use as well. So I would be completely in support of my way, looking at the criteria that's needed. And see if we can engage with those that can put it in motion.
Councillor Ashby.
I support it as well. I'd look at the link, answer that. We, uh obviously we know a misery volunteer at, at the shed, right? So they've already asked a question, you know, it'd be great, well, not a question, statement, that it'd be great to have something similar. At Attleborough, I could, I think it'd be a, a great one.
Councillor Wenham, do you think that perhaps you could facilitate a discussion with, with your neighbours and perhaps the town park to see? If, if, because I think that's a really great foundation for trying to move this forward. You already know people that. Uh volunteer and that, that is brilliant. Thank you so much.
And it's a national network as well to support the men, organ over after you. There's plenty of advice and support.
Okay, so I don't, I don't think we necessarily need hesitation on this this evening, but in principle, we're supportive, committed to that. We are going to explore whatever all this is to your liking. Thank you. Uh I am just gonna uh take a motion to um reconvene our standing orders so that we're back in our place session. I have a proposal and second to do that, please. Councillor Ashby, second, Councillor Dalton, and a share of hands, please. And that is unanimous.
We do need to go back to that, just to make sure that we got the, the votes.
Which is that?
Uh the one about the Fun Fest.
Yeah.
With the majority one of the motion.
Yeah.
Just need to repeat that, please.
What, the motion?
Yes, but yeah.
You wanna, you want me to repeat the motion?
Yes.
The motion was, uh sorry, uh the clerk's just getting a check. Um that we approve the grant application made.
Yeah.
Subject to. Receipt of.
Yeah.
Twelve months' bank statements.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the council being content with those.
Yeah.
Once that's been done.
Yeah.
We can release the funds.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can we repeat the vote, please? Sorry.
Oh, you want to.
Because that was done actually in the preparation, so it doesn't.
Okay, um yeah, so let me repeat the vote, please. So it was.
Proposed by.
Proposed, it was proposed by myself, it was seconded by.
Uh it was by councillor Ashby, yeah.
And all were in favour of an extension from councillor Taylor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so and then moving back on. Um item thirteen, which is the website, the business directory. Um so there had been some comments about this, uh about the business directory uh being out of date, which it was. And the four businesses, correction if I'm wrong, Sharon, um that had been carried over. Um that were no longer active in the town have been removed.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I went through them all, so that they are all live at, you know, they're, they're still in existence, et cetera. So we're satisfied of what's there is valid.
Okay, and, and the confusion come from, obviously we do have a new website that only launched last month. Well, is it June or July now?
Uh probably June.
June, end of June. And um the data that had previously been on the town council website, which was the business directory that was taken down, I think it was like some time ago. Was carried over. Um obviously the data remained, it was slightly complicated, and it was, yeah, it was then updated. So this is something that we have discussed. Sharon is keen to make further improvements to the business directory, categorise it. Um and invite our businesses to submit their information to be listed. And, and hopefully that can be done over the next couple of weeks.
Yeah.
And uh, yeah, we can, we can have some publicity of it on our social media and on our website. Is there anything else that you'd like to add?
That's fine, I've got what we're gonna do, yeah, it's fine.
Thank you, Sharon. Uh next we have councillors' reports. Looking to you. Uh councillors' reports, um to be honest. Um I'm gonna lead with this. I'm gonna say that we had our first outdoor cinema event this weekend. It was a huge success. Uh I'd like to thank so many councillors for taking the time to marshal over the weekend and apply themselves. It was a fantastic team effort. And the team effort was led by our town park. And who done all of the heavy lifting, the organising, and spent the entire weekend volunteering. So Sharon, as a token of our gratitude and our appreciation, the members have all chipped in.
Oh, that's lovely. Thank you.
I'd also like to present you with some.
Well, that's really nice, thank you. I'd also like to thank. Um the councillors, all of the councillors that turned out, I think there were some total of six of them, and also Anne Fong, her mum.
I know.
So I must make mention of, so we'll share the wine.
Thank you very much, that's really sweet.
Thank you.
Fine. And I don't think I've had many engagements uh this month, other than obviously attending the cinema and attending. Uh the Pride event on Saturday, which was absolutely fantastic. Um hats off to you, councillor Bertram. Uh you pulled it out of the bag. It was a brilliant day. The atmosphere was wonderful. And um very much looking forward to another Aprabide next year. Um I will say that, as I've already mentioned, I've got Woodfest coming up, um on the first of September. And um the opening and reopening of uh Turner's Occupational Health and the Little Hair Shop. Um coming up as well, which I'm very excited to be uh attending. Any other members? Do you have anything to report? Councillor S Taylor.
Yeah, so the district council capacity, I've done a few screenings, I've been first in, always available online. Had a licensing catch-up. Great to see the teams at Breckland County Council, through the status and everyone's still working together and, and. Tapping in businesses that maybe we're a little bit backward in not working within our means is great. But we've had a catch-up on flooding and how life has been actually managed, which is really good. Um that's about it. I haven't been as busy this month, several months, but obviously still spending a lot of time at that hospital.
Uh councillor Taylor, just off the back of your comment about flooding. Um there is gonna be another multi-agency meeting, um if members would like to attend. Uh it's been scheduled for the thirtieth of. August, Friday, the August at six P M. And. You would be, yeah, you would be much appreciated. Um any other councillors' reports? Councillor Taylor.
Uh just to go on, this covered under the, I mean, my most tricky before this meeting this evening, but um. Now I'm a colour refuser. I've been there for the plan. I can only be signed and feel. Um but it was a productive meeting. Uh we've got key stakeholders involved in that as well, within the community. Uh and more information will be available soon. But it's not an age really that, don't worry, it's not really, really mine, it's just a. Updates on policy, updates on the level we are. Updates on what new opportunities we've got, we've got new governance. Now being changed, it's, and it's, it's what we can do. So, so again, it's about all the communities, groups and things. Bringing that in there in terms of how we do it there four months ago, next twenty thirty, what's been six years. But it was very positive. Uh first meeting with consultants that have been appointed, so I'm sure we'll be regular updates and perhaps we'll put that on the website as well.
Okay.
I think perhaps a page, just on the website too, um and the updates, similar to having the flooding updates, could be.
Yeah, I mean, I've got one for the first one, but really we need to have to build, I think, we get the next round of view and sort of like.
I think it's like now, the opportunity for the community to. Be into it, but not going back ten years on saying, we don't need to do more anything. Another student can do it, it's more. What we'd like to see with what we've got at the moment. And what the bill is on, do the community, and how can we improve them? So let's see. See how the rules pass as well, but I don't need to say that, but um. It, it's, it's not real.
No. And hopefully our consultant will help us to get contained. Um any other councillors, before we move on to Sharon's report? None? Um Sharon, would you like to just rattle through your vote, please?
I'll try to, yeah, very quickly.
Thank you.
People might have seen that. Um, people might have seen that the town hall is now having its makeover, the first, the back is complete and it's now started on the front. Um, had a query on a concern about whether we are liaising with the heritage officer about the improvements. And I can assure you that I've, for this, probably the third time now, I've liaised with the heritage officer just to make sure. He's happy with everything, so he has been informed all the way through. Uh, the new help button for people maybe in a wheelchair that are quite low down has been installed at the front near the door. So that you can press it and ask for help. Um, and, um. Yeah, we've received a flurry of bookings for party events for the coming months. Um, the old benches in the closed churchyard, which is near to the civilian nursery, they are due for refurbishment. Um, updates to the CCTV system at the compound to add even better security to the area are now fully complete and working effectively. Uh, ground staff unfortunately have encountered two further incidents of rudeness this month from members of the public, this is still unacceptable. And we would ask any members of the public to adjust any, any concerns that they have to myself. Uh, bus shelter on Sip, Sip Street Road has been repainted, the annual play inspection report has been issued. So myself and the head groundsman are now liaising to put all the app, our programme of works in place to action recommendations. Um. Then, uh, then, um, the grounds team have been working on replacing some of the fencing around the open spaces, which are in the sort of like the fairly new houses. Obviously, they do go from time to time. Uh, benches and bins, um, we've got approval to place three new benches along London Road. So, uh, at the previous planning and highways committee, I've been commissioned to sort of, um, get quotes for that. Um, we've also seeking quotes for, um, the type of bin that you've got on Queen Square, which is more sturdy bin. So that they will look smarter elsewhere in the town. Uh, the, I think the outdoor cinema event has been mentioned. And, um, the Queen Square Thursday market, we have been trying to advertise and. Uh, get new stalls used, so we've got two further stalls coming to sell away tomorrow. And that's it, really?
It's brilliant, thank you, Sharon. Do any members have any questions for Sharon over here? No, and if anyone would like to see a copy of Sharon's report, it's available in the meeting papers.
Yeah, it's on the website, yeah.
Brilliant, thank you very much. Uh, next we have item sixteen, which is public participation. Uh, would any members of the public like to participate?
Can I just have one question, please? My question is to the club initially. Um, how can you do a stop take of what you have, the town has actually has?
Um, what, you mean on the asset register?
Well, yeah, you know, what we've got, you know, you've got a comp badge, haven't you?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that should be done annually within the internal audit report.
So with that in mind, um, you've all talked about what's exciting to see tonight, that are happening in the town council. How do you let the public know about these things? You no longer do a newsletter, only sixty percent of the population do it Facebook. So my question is, what's happened to the notice boards that were purchased by the town council two years ago?
I think that's just simply a logistical thing where, um, that, yes, you're right, the notice boards have been placed. I simply haven't had time to go to the, uh, round to the town and, uh, propose the locations for the town council to approve. It's simply a time thing, so that, that we still have them, yeah.
Perhaps not to you, but to the mayor and the rest of the councillors. I think, you know, you've all been in place for well over, you know, a year now. And I think communicating to the public, if you're not going to do the newsletter. Uh, I think to make use of things that you're actually in the home storage and cost the town a lot of money two years ago. Um, I don't think you can tell much to get those for that, I think if you look back at families, there's to be one at Gains Meadow, I think. I think one at the entrance to the recreation van, and I think you'll have to look back. But I think if you're not going to be informing the public via newsletter of all the things you're doing, which is great, and there's lots of stuff going on. Please make use of those, because we have got a lot of people living in the town that don't do internet and don't do social media. And, uh, that's a free way of your life, if you're informed of anything going on, so.
Oh, thank you, I think that's been noted. And the other members in the public, please, yes.
I just wanted to say, as one of the members of the public who attended, you opened a cinema, it was a success, I did enjoy it. I went with a friend too, and thank you, Sharon, I met you there that night, and it was a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else, please? No, okay, um, so we're gonna move on to items for the next agenda, um. Sharon, is there anything that you'd like to put forward?
Not.
No, just, just subject to obviously.
Yeah, yeah, it will follow on what we have discussed, yeah.
Um. Councillor Wood.
Sorry, this was just going on, it's, it's, it's worse than running on a. Yeah, right, well, yeah, I'm, 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 I'm. But if you are going to, it's, it's, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Could have done.
Okay, I think if, if you have actual problems doing machine changing.
Okay.
Well, mentioning hidden in there.
Perhaps we could have it on a, as a, a quarterly basis or something.
Yeah, yeah, it's, that's what will be, that's, I think, that would be useful for.
It might be useful, members as well, that don't sit on the planning committee. Okay, next we have the exclusion of the pressing public, pass a resolution, excluding the pressing public from the range of the main, giving a sense of nature of the business to be discussed. Can I have a proposal in a second, please? Councillor De Souza, councillor Dalton, and a share of hands, thank you. And thank you, everyone, for attending this evening, it's brilliant to see so many people present.